I'll ask everyone to please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Welcome to tonight's planning board meeting. Please be aware of the fire exit, which is to the left in this room. In the event of an emergency, please move in a calm and orderly fashion down the stairs. Do not use the elevator. The meetings are recorded by the secretary for the purpose of a record and minutes, so please identify yourself each time you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. We also have a portable microphone, sometimes we forget that. The board will follow the items in the order that they appear on the agenda, extra copies of which are near the door. After the case has been called, the applicant and/or representatives shall come to the podium, identify him or herself, give his or her address, and present their case. The planning board members will then have an opportunity to question the applicant. If this case is a public hearing, it will be open for public input, at which time anyone wishing to speak to the board regarding this application can come forward to the podium, identify themselves, along with their address, and direct any questions to the board. Once all public input has been completed, the applicant or site representative will be given the opportunity to respond to any public input. Once all public input has been completed and all questions have been satisfied, the case will be closed to public input and the board will then move on to a decision. No further input is allowed at this point. I'll ask Michelle to call the first case.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Case number PB 1606-1, upon the matter of request by Joe O'Donnell, acting as agent for Shamrock Jacks for revised site plan approval to construct a plus or minus 368 square foot addition with site-related improvements on premises 4554 Culver Road in a C business district.
Okay, good evening. My name is Joe O'Donnell. I have offices at 150 Versailles Road, Rochester, New York, and I am the Architect of Record for this project. And we're here tonight to request site plan approval for a proposed addition, excuse me, on the south side of the existing Shamrock Jacks restaurant in Seabreeze. As you may know, in 2013, we were in front of this board requesting approval for the site plan improvements to the building out in the front along Culver Road. I think if you've driven by there, you can see how successful that project was, not only for the curb appeal of the building, but also for the business itself. The owners of Shamrock Jacks would like to continue that commitment, and so they had asked me to come up with a design to try and dress up the south entrance of the building, which is their primary entrance off the parking lot. You know, they have the nice facade along Culver Road, but the majority of people do come in around the backside. So as a result, in your packages that I did submit, I can walk you right through there. Obviously, the first tab is the letter of intent to the planning board, the site plan review checklist, and then did receive comments from your workshop meeting, three items. You had asked that we propose one of the options that we had put in the package. The reason for that, why there was two options, is because one option takes away one parking spot, the other option doesn't take away any. But ideally, we would like to go with option one, which is on tab four of your booklets. And the reason for that is that it creates a much nicer, attractive entrance with two landscape beds bordering the entryway. It moves those two parking spots away from the existing entrance, which right now, I've been going there for, I hate to admit it, 10, 12 years, but it kind of is a dangerous situation as cars pull into, as patrons are coming in and out. So this solves that problem. And the way we mitigated that loss of parking was, if you look at your plans, technically, space number five, which is on the south side of the main building, was not in the original construction of the previous project in 2013. It was actually added in there when the blacktop contractor went out there, he saw you had enough room for another one. They had the utility pole shifted to the east, and they put in spot number five. Then you look, spot number 17, which is kind of over there on the east side of the property by itself, is that building is owned by the owners of Shamrock Jacks, and they're willing to put a spot back into that spot for an employee. So the net effect is that we don't lose any parking. As you know, in your package, then, in tab number six is the proposed floor plans and elevations. As you can see from drawing A1, gets a little bit larger blow-up of the intent there, which is to create a vestibule to prevent the rush of cold air and the loss of cool air in the summer that goes right out that door. It also then creates that, or separates that entrance out to the patio area for smoking. And as you also see in the A1 is the proposed south entry elevation, which essentially just takes some of the design elements and the architectural character off the front of the building and incorporates it onto the back of the building, so that was the intent. The scope of the work includes the construction of this new vestibule and the construction of a walk-in cooler and dry storage room to the east there, shown on drawing 1A1. The board also had asked about some landscaping and proposed lighting. What I did was I went and took some pictures, and I got a handout for each one of you. Thank you. Thank you. Yep. Thanks. So the package I just handed out to you shows the existing elevation of the Culver Road side of the building, which shows the gooseneck light fixtures coming down over the name of the establishment. Those exact same fixtures will be used on this other elevation. And as you can see, the center, where the vestibule is, essentially takes the architectural character of the front of that building and incorporates it onto the back. The second photo is a close-up of the gooseneck fixture. And then I just took some pictures of the landscaping as it is out there as of late as today. As you can see, it's very well manicured, very well kept. That would be the same commitment on the south side of the building in those two areas that say landscape bed by other. So I hopefully addressed that item for you. There is not going to be a requirement for any additional site lighting. The only additional lighting is the building lighting, as I just went through. And I also received comments from La Bella indicating that they were, wanted to make sure we took care of the drainage. Obviously, much of the drainage is going to actually flow to the backside of the building. It's a very complicated roof tie-in that we had to come up with in order to create positive flow of the water on the flat area, because the building, existing building has a flat roof, the middle portion of the building has a sloped roof, and then the end building over here has a gable end roof as well. But that would be something we'd present in our final working drawings to the building inspector, a gutter and drainage off to the side, so there'd be no concern that that water was draining into the parking lot and freezing up and creating a hazard. Also, as late as today, I received comments from Monroe County Development Review Committee. I have to admit, I was a little confused. One portion of the letter said they had no comments and no objections, and then the second half of the letter said something about a monument. Maybe my friend John Sharaba can help me on this. Monumentation must be checked, and a $2,500 deposit. I'm not sure what that's all about. I can call, I can definitely call the county in Monroe and make sure that that's even required. I have a feeling it's, it has to do with something if this is a whole brand-new site plan. But again, I'm not a civil engineer. So in any event, the last portion of the booklet that I did send out just has some of the same landscaping items that we presented and did in the 2013 project. So in any event, I think I'll open up the questions.
Excuse me, I just wanted to interrupt. That one comment about the monumentation is DOT, Monroe County DOT comment, and it's because of the proximity to the right-of-way, so I think they're just making sure that any old permits that may be required.
That's what I figured. I just little sticker-shocked at the $2,500 deposit.
So...
More than fees.
Well, I then, I think the key word there is probably deposit.
Yeah.
So that's a good thing, but you could certainly follow up with DOT if you had any questions.
Okay, thanks, John.
Thank you, and thank you for responding to the questions and concerns that we had earlier. I'm going to ask if anyone on the board has any additional questions. Bernie?
Sure. Mr. O'Donnell, and maybe I missed it, but in the workshop, we were a little confused between SP 02 and SP 03.
Okay.
Two different designs there.
Well, S, okay, let me just, I can walk you right through. SP 01 is the existing site plan, okay? SP 02 was option one, and SP 03 was an option two. As I mentioned in the beginning of my presentation, the board had asked us to pick one or the other and present it. We chose option one would be our preference.
Option two, SP 02.
SP 02, yes, option one, right. Yeah, okay, I understand the confusion, but yeah.
Okay. And I think, if I recall from the workshop, that's the one we...
The one we kind of liked, yeah.
Yeah, we do too. We just, we, I wasn't sure how you were going to take losing the one parking spot up close there, but I think we solved that.
Besides that, I think it's pretty complete, so I'm good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mary?
No, it looks pretty good to me, and my questions are answered.
Thank you. Michael?
Sure, I think it looks real nice, too. You're planting arborvitae. Is that not called deer dessert?
Yeah, I saw that comment in the, in the, your guys' email back to me. We can certainly substitute. I would, I was going to leave that up to a professional landscape designer to really pick the proper landscapes, but if it is, I know we've had some out there now, and I asked Mark Petsing, and he goes, "Well, you know, I haven't seen a deer on this property in forever."
That's fine, okay. In another area, that might be another concern.
Yeah.
Okay, well taken, thanks.
Yeah, I was actually a little jealous of this picture, because I see the arborvitae in the house that never would happen in my house. Whatever you're doing is working.
You know, they came with leaves below my feet.
Yeah.
Alan?
I'm good, thank you. As long as we've got the drainage situation.
Yeah, yeah, that's more of a construction detail, which I know, I'm sure John Nitty would have picked up on in any event, so.
Just to reiterate, I think the preferred option one, which is SP 02, is much more workable for those handicap parking spots, and we all like it a lot more than the other one. The lighting, you answered our questions, I think that's very appropriate lighting for not only the, what we like in town, but also for this type of restaurant. And I'd just like to note that, you know, you were with us a couple of years ago. I think they've done a great job over there, and, you know, just looking at these pictures, you can see that there's no skimping in the paint, the multiple colors, the dentil work. I mean, they've really done a nice job making it a tranquil building, so.
But it worked.
Good.
A lot of people, you say they didn't even know they were there, when that old facade, when it had the brick wall, no windows, no doors.
And just sticking with that design and carrying it around the back makes perfect sense, and I think it's a great application.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mike?
Yeah, I just want to say that I appreciate the fact that you're carrying the style around the side of the building. As a fellow patron, it needed it.
Yes.
Thank you very much. I'll open the public hearing to see if anyone has anything they'd like to share. Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, were you going to share? Okay, thought we had somebody that was going to share. That being said, I'll ask if there's any more comments? No? Can I have a motion from the board?
Sure.
Sorry, close the public hearing. Go ahead.
In regards to, we got to do seeker first, right?
You have to do seeker first.
Okay. In regards to PB 1606-1, in regards to seeker, I'd like to move that it's an unlisted action, negative declaration.
I'd just like to add to that, that we were all provided a short environmental assessment form, the Part II form, and each of the 11 boxes on the first page have been checked no. And on the back, it only indicates the project is a revised site plan associated with a minor addition to an existing restaurant and related site improvements. The proposed modifications to the building and the site will not have any adverse impacts on the character of the neighborhood. As an already developed site, the modifications will not produce any negative impacts on natural or environmental features. Based upon our review of the case, or the application as well as that form, I would second Mr. Blackie's motion.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sorry, I'm filling out some paperwork. That I've not done before, hang on. So what do I do with this?
So I can either, I assume it's unanimous. There's that to be here. No, I'm, discussion really is amazing, I think. Just one, our mental assessment form, Part II, Part III, getting the point that everybody would have to stand. I don't like going in and sticking in right here. I love that. Good. If you're negative, then where is it? If in fact, if in fact, that's how.
And can I get a motion on the...
Sure.
Go ahead.
I'll make a motion on PB 1606-1, upon the matter of request by Joe O'Donnell, acting as an agent for Shamrock Jacks for revised site plan approval to construct a plus or minus 368 square foot addition with site-related improvements on premises 4554 Culver Road in a C business district. I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
Could I add to that before you second it? Could you put down that he did choose the SP 01 option?
SP 02.
02, sorry.
SP 02, option one, okay.
It's what they have, right?
Yes. And then Alan, you were seconding.
Sure.
I just wanted to see if you're paying attention.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Michelle?
Sure. Next item on the agenda is case number PB 1603-3. Upon the matter of request by Land Tech Surveying and Planning, acting as agent for Lighthouse Point Property Associates, for preliminary final site plan approval, woodlot environmental protection overlay district permit and floodplain EPod permit to construct a 125-unit multifamily apartment development compromised of two four-story 54-unit multifamily apartment buildings with ground-level parking and one three-story and mixed-use building with 18-unit of multifamily apartment development and 8,000 square feet of commercial space on first floor with a two-story clubhouse with pool and site-related improvements on premises 951 and 1027 Thomas Avenue and 45 Pattonwood Drive in an RH River Harbor District.
Good evening. My name is Melissa Slaughter. I'm an attorney at Knopf Shaw, and we are the attorneys for the applicant. I was volunteered to do this presentation while Alan is relaxing somewhere in Europe right now, hopefully. So I'm just going to go over a couple of things really quick. Last meeting, the board requested additional information from us, and so I'm just going to run through each of those items. So the first item, the Shippoe sign-off, I actually just spoke with the archaeological coordinator from Shippoe today, and a letter is being actually sent to Carrie, I think, today detailing that the project area was, you know, a former marshland, and it's mostly comprised of fill, so there's no potential for archaeological sites, and they no longer request a Phase I and, or IB, and no archaeological surveys are being requested anymore, so. The utility and grading plans, so on Friday, John Sharaba dropped off updated plans, so hopefully you guys received those. And he's going to come up here and discuss those in details in a couple of minutes. The lighting plan and landscaping plan, at the last meeting, I don't think we realized that we had provided you with updated plans, but regardless, new plans, lighting and landscaping plans were provided to you again on Friday, and John will talk about those in a minute. So in regarding sidewalks and other pedestrian amenities, we have provided update, updated sidewalk details, which John, again, will speak to, and scaled building and elevation and floor plans. I understand that some elevation plans or details were dropped off at some point between this meeting and the last meeting, and new floor plan, or floor plans will be provided if you haven't already received those. So one question that came up in the workshop was about the attire that the workers will wear during, when they're remediating the brownfield, so I just wanted to touch on that really quick. We reached out to Pete Von Shondor from Leader Professionals, he's our environmental consultant, and he clarified that workers will just be in regular attire, they'll just be wearing jeans, work boots, t-shirts, safety glasses, and hats. So we're going to be providing a letter, so you can hear it specifically from Pete, but he did confirm that hazmat suits will not be required. And then, so an update on this lead agency issue. We met with the city and the town, the town of Aranacoye on June 15th regarding lead agency, and what was determined that we are going to submit a whole new binder, which I'm currently preparing, I, and I'm calling it the accumulation seeker submission package, because it includes materials that we both have submitted to you and additional materials that we will be submitting to you, just to make it super easy, super clear, have everything in a three-and-a-half-inch binder, which they're all sitting in my office right now. And then also, the narrative is going to be revised to clearly detail the, you know, the scope of the project and all potential environmental impacts, if any, in both Aranacoye and Rochester. So last, what I'm going to touch on is that we appeared in front of the ZBA on June 6th, and we received some really good feedback from the ZBA regarding density, and I don't know if you watched or if you fell asleep, but we did get some good feedback. And then also, we got some good feedback from the neighbors indicating that they were actually open to the project if it did meet town requirements. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Sharaba from Land Tech to go over the specifics of the plans.
Thank you.
Before, before John starts, if I could just ask Carrie, if I understand correctly, that we're still waiting on the city's decision?
It's more that the city has asked some questions with respect to the application and understanding the potential impacts associated with the project in order, before they can sign off or before they're willing to sign off on lead agency, just as a point of order, even though the only project being contemplated right now is here in the town of Aranacoye, the environmental review is encompassing the entire project site, which also includes the city of Rochester. And so the answer to seeker in, here in the town, would also potentially be answering seeker for the city of Rochester unless the project were to change and the thresholds that were, you know, or the framework of the project changed dramatically. The answer that the town provides with respect to seeker is also binding for the city of Rochester, and if I've said that incorrectly, Rob Brenner would probably leap off the stage and correct me.
Yeah, no, Carrie did a nice job. I mean, just to summarize, Rich, what the city's really looking for is they're looking to better understand the hypothetical future full build-out of the city of Rochester property, which is speculative at this point, but they were concerned with segmenting the seeker review with the town reviewing the environmental impacts now and then the city reviewing them later. So they wanted a complete seeker package that evaluates hypothetical future build-out in the city.
And, and both of you did a really good job at the workshop explaining that to us. I just wanted to get it on the record and make sure everybody that's here understands that there's not going to be a vote tonight, tonight is just more presentation of, from the applicant, and we are still waiting on the city's approval at this point with, in terms of...
Their consent to lead agency before this board can declare itself lead agent, and then also make its determination of significance based on the information presented as part of the application.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask a clarifying question on that?
Sure.
So when this project first started, way back, way back when, there was a lot of conversation around when the project first had buildings in the city side, not just in Aranacoye, that for whatever reason, we were leaning towards having the city do the seeker back then. And I remember asking a lot of questions as to why. I'm just curious as to, could that change now with the lead agency, or?
Well, this board is seeking lead agency. The application before this board only encompasses lands in the town of Aranacoye. There's no specific project being proposed at this time in the city of Rochester, and so they're not trying to, they're not trying to ask for lead agency of the project here. They're just trying to better understand the full scope of potential impacts.
No, I got it. I just didn't understand back then why we would, we had the majority piece, but everybody was saying we'd let the city do the seeker. So I don't know what's changed, why, I can remember the whole conversation, and nobody could really make a point.
Right, I think that, I think at this point, it's, because the project has changed, that's not even on the table, I don't think, for us, but I'd be, I'd be happy to chat with you.
No, no, I just wanted to know, because for whatever reason, I can recall, they were better equipped. So if we're doing environmental for the whole...
The lead agents...
We were told, that's all.
Yeah, I think the, at the time, the city of Rochester's charter is set up differently, and their lead agency, lead agents are designated staff people by title, so that there isn't a specific board, and they have a framework that's established. They handle a lot of, a lot of complex projects that require seeker review, and so their charter is set up differently. They sort of, they're built to accommodate seeker of the, of this kind of project. That was the initial discussion, and I don't think any resolution or decision had been made, just at the time, it was just a conversation.
No, because then they came back and moved it all into Aranacoye, so we never moved forward on that.
Right, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, well, I guess I'll start then. I agree with Melissa and yourself that I think the information shared at the workshop was very beneficial, and also the staff meeting we had that Carrie hosted with the city last month was, or earlier this month, was very beneficial to the project. A lot of my comments and information I can give you tonight is a lot of site-related stuff that helps you with the seeker process, so I'll go over some of the highlights that we talked about previously, that I believe were on previous submissions, but maybe not correlated in a manner which was easy to read and understand. So I guess with that, I'll kind of go to the board and go to the, to the landscape plan to start. The, one of the issues we had with this project is landscaping and how we're going to buffer the neighbors and buffer the project, and if you go to the secret document, we talk about perimeter plannings and things such as that. So the landscaping plan, and I'm not here, I'm here, but Heinrich Fisher's not here, so I'm not in landscape architect, but we have over 183 plans shown on this plan. A lot of foundation plannings, a lot of screening elements to accommodate buffering along the old railroad property. Also on the landscape plan, you see the light contours for the proposed light poles. So those are the, the dark lines, they almost look like proposed contours, and they do have the foot candles noted on that. So you'll see that on your full-size landscaping plan. Also, there's been a detail added to the top of the page, which is a typical rock, segmental rock wall. This wall is proposed along the rear of the Thomas Avenue homes, and so we wanted to show you what that was going to look like. So if you recall, there's about a four-foot changing grade from the rear of the Thomas Avenue backyards to our proposed roadway, and that transition's going to be accommodated by the use of a retaining wall. The landscaping plan also depicts some of the other topics we talked about. One of the topics was sidewalks. Previous discussions have gone back and forth, but I think we've got a clear direction now that our goal is to bring people into this project. So we've always had a connection to Thomas Avenue to this existing smaller three-story building that we have. So this is the main point of access, then there's a sidewalk that goes along the east side and then the south side, and that's where it ended previously. The current plan that you have shows that sidewalk projecting into the paved travel way around the big building. And if you look, there's a five-foot area that we are proposing to stripe that's adjacent to the south and east edge of pavement. So instead of installing a sidewalk, since we have a controlled environment here with a lot of one-way roads, we want to pave and stripe the pavement so people can walk along the pavement. And then we projected this pavement and added a new sidewalk to the existing sidewalk system that's along the south side of the bridge, so you can connect right into that sidewalk system. The other thing we did is we keep talking about the lands that will happen in the future in the city, so we did... that's along the south side of the bridge, so you can connect right into that sidewalk system. The other thing we did is we keep talking about the lands that will happen in the future in the city, so we did project a small segment to the city, a small sidewalk to that line so people can traverse into that area in the future. This area, as we talked about, may change in the future as the city develops, but we will have a connected sidewalk to the future plans. Another element that we talked about is we keep talking about the former, or the existing CSX property and that's a quasi municipal path. So we, we have a connective path from our project to the railroad bed so that people can access that path, just like the general public in Aranacoye. So that's the changes that, the only changes were adding the sidewalk. Other than that, the landscape plan has remained the same. We've had questions or comments about seagrass. That is not incorporated on the current plans, but as we eventually move to site plan, get into those more details, we do want to accommodate you with adding those grasses. Another element that was added to this plan is a monument sign located north and adjacent to the right-of-way of Thomas Avenue. So, we don't have any details of that sign, but that's showing our intent that we do want to have a monument sign indicating where the project is. That's the landscape plan. Other elements previously discussed that I think is important to bring up is the drainage issue. I've told you that this is a, needs to be a Phase 2 compliant plan with the DEC, we have to get a DEC permit, and we submitted plans with a design that met the requirements of that permit, the current plans. During the process, we had a little hiccup saying, oh, the fact that you're connecting to this six-foot concrete pipe, you have to go another direction. So we started having conversations with the city, we talked about an easement and all this stuff. Well now, after conversations with the DEC, we're going back to our original plan. So our original plan as designed meets the intent of the permit. It's not approved yet, still has to go through the review process, but Mr. Kylie has really been active working with us and is actually expecting a letter from the DEC showing that that'll soon be, that's an approved method of moving forward. So we're excited about that. While I talked about Mr. Kylie, the other topic we talked about briefly was the lift station or pump station. That pump station, if you look on your utility plan, is located in this general area off the back of the, off the back of the parking lot. That pump station's been there for the last four months. You'll see a manhole, you'll see a force main, so that, that really hasn't changed, but I don't know if I've ever pointed to you where it is. So, that pump station or lift station is going to be designed in order for the town of Aranacoye to accept dedication, so it's going to be built to town standards. And why are we doing that? Because at some point, the rest of this property is going to be developed, so it's going to need more capacity, it's going to need some municipal review and meeting, and so that's why we're designing it to that standard. The, it's estimated right now with the capacity about 30,000 gallons a day, so we'll size that accordingly as the plans move forward. So, we don't have the pump designed yet, but we know we can accommodate that with the water volumes that we're expecting for this project. Trying to think if I'm missing anything else, let me just run through my notes.
John, can I ask you a quick question about the conversation with the DEC? So, was that a positive conversation with both Albany and the local DEC that we're going to be okay to tie in?
Yes, I don't know the exact details of it, but from talking to Mr. Kylie, I think we're, we're in really good shape.
Okay, thank you.
And going through my notes, I think I've covered the topics that may affect you on seeker. I know we probably have a lot more topics to talk about as far as the site plan, but I'm willing to take any questions you have at this time.
Just quickly, if you could, this is the first time we're seeing the grading plan. Is there anything specific about that you want to draw our attention to or...
I don't have the grading plan up, I can do the best I can off my, off the cuff here.
We've, we've had a chance to preliminarily review it and I'm certainly going to look at it more, I just didn't know if there's anything you want to draw our attention to.
So, I appreciate the opportunity. So, the biggest change that we've had in the last two months is the fact that this smaller building has gone from a conventional residential unit with the, with the podium parking to a commercial building now. So that podium parking is now removed, so we have commercial on the ground floor. It's about 8,000 square feet of commercial. So, that is the only grading change that we've had. So, the site is still graded the same way, but now we're just bringing that building down. As we talked about before, the site is that you're coming up the hill, you're going to be able to drive right to the front of the building through the portico share drop-off, and then as you go west, you're going to drop back down. So you're going to transition about 11 feet from the front of the building to the back, so the back is what I would call a walkout. So the cars, if you've seen the elevations that Mr. Hinsonock put together, we've got open area where the cars are lower, then you've got the patio area where the pool is. So that's all remained the same as our plans for about the last six months.
Alan?
On the sidewalk plan, is there buffering between the cars and the sidewalk itself? I guess I don't understand what you're telling me by a paved sidewalk area.
So, as we, as we talked about, the plan's changing. You know, first don't bring people in, now bringing people in, and we kind of agree with you, having people here will work well. But we're also very aware of our green infrastructure practices, so, and the lack of area to landscape. So if I was to take the sidewalk and go five-foot adjacent to the pavement, we would wipe out large areas of landscaping and green space. It would impact our stormwater management plan and things such as that. So what we're proposing, and I'm glad you're bringing this up for better conversation, is to stripe an area in the existing asphalt. So stripe an area so people could walk down there. So we, especially along here, it's one-way traffic, it's going to be very safe, and then in here, people can walk. So, this is a passive recreational area, you're not going to have a lot of high-volume cars, there's not a lot of high-volume traffic, 25 miles an hour is about the max you can do in here, so there'll be people walking along the shoulder of the road.
So there is no buffer between the pedestrian and the stricke automobile?
Nope.
Okay.
What's the width of that?
Five feet.
And is this pervious pavement where the sidewalk is going to be?
Correct. Yeah, the only impervious pavement, as we talked about before, is in these parking stalls and I believe some area on the north parking lot.
So it'll be paved, it'll be paved differently than the driveway itself?
The porous pavement or the sidewalk?
The sidewalk.
I'm proposing the sidewalk to be striped.
I'm talking about the material.
Same as the driveway.
Okay, so it's going to be impervious?
Correct.
John, could you just go over the building elevations? I know some folks, at least at the zoning board, the public was asking what the heights of the buildings are. Would you mind just sharing those?
I might, to the right plan then. I think they're listed right on here, aren't they? Oh, there they are. Here, I guess we pass these down. Well, yeah, frozen by that, so. Well, if I start with the proposed three-story building, that's the 18-unit building with a commercial underneath, the first floor of that building is going to be at elevation of 258. If I can go back to my grading plan. The existing area in that building is around 259. So we're right basically at grade for that building. And then we go up the three stories from there. So first floor, 258, second floor, 270, third floor, 282, and the top, the roof being the 296. And then going back, the existing grade is at 259 currently today. If we go to the bigger building, the existing grade in that area is generally at 251 elevation. So if you look at the elevations, the parking is at elevation 251. So that's where the cars are going to be parked. Then we go up to the first floor, which includes the pool area and patio, that goes up to 265. So that's a 14-foot changing grade, that's to accommodate the I-beams and the special, obviously there's going to be a lot of headers and metal down through there and HVAC to work that. And then the second floor goes to 277, 289, fourth floor, 301, and the roof at a final elevation of 315. So that's what we have on the site plan, and I believe these are reflected on Mr. Hinsonock's plan, the small copies, that I was good enough to be giving to us.
So then on the larger building, you're talking about a difference from the 251 at the garage level to 315 at the peak of the roof?
At the roof.
Okay.
Yep.
I have another quick question for you about the sidewalks. So the path that you're proposing, the pedestrian access to the CSX area, what kind of a path will that be?
We're really thinking of just a passive, like a mulch path. We don't see a lot of activity through there, but we do want to have opportunity to go through there. In that area, there's a changing grade of about seven feet.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
And I know that the sidewalks I described going along the pavement is kind of unorthodox, so that's why we're here to talk about it. So we asked to bring the sidewalk in, but looking, there's always a cause and effect. So, we're going to wipe out a lot of landscaping, we're going to add impervious if we do something different than that. So, I don't know if we're going to move forward with seeker with this information and tackle it again further down the road at site plan, maybe we could sit on it and think about it, talk about it?
Yeah, I'm not, I would prefer to see something that would be pervious pavement and also a delineation between the pedestrian and the car, especially for folks that would come, that are not familiar with the property itself. They may have a tendency to walk toward the islands that are actually landscaped in the center of the parking.
Yep.
That that would be their way.
Right. You know, I'm a...
Striping works great during the summer, but that's not going to work all the time. I don't, if there could be just some division there, maybe a small curbing or...
Yeah, we thought about, you know, a change of pavement, you know, but then you get into constructability issues, it's hard to pour a five-foot asphalt path or something like that along the road. I understand it's unorthodox. Being a resident of Aranacoye, my street doesn't have sidewalks. Numerous streets in this town don't have sidewalks. I don't even think some, a lot of the streets have the width that we have in Aranacoye. So we do have 24-foot drive aisle out of most of this, and as I mentioned, south of the building, it's a one-way situation, so cars can avoid it. I think it's a very, you know, easy maneuver to accomplish as a driver to see these people as they're walking, but I understand your point. You know, we want to make it a safe environment, so I'm looking for ideas to try to help.
I personally don't have any problem with it. I mean, all over the city, they're putting in bike lanes right next to cars that are going 35, 40 miles an hour. I mean, for, for development like this, where people are going to be going slow inside there, I mean, we're not building a highway, we're, it's a parking lot and, so I don't really have any problem with it personally. I see why there's a concern, but it's way off on the edge.
Yeah, I think there's a safety issue and it being on the edge is also another concern. You've got people walking across an entryway as opposed to close to the, the structure itself.
Well, that's...
There's no, there's no sidewalk that I can see close to the entryway. You're walking across the parking lot to get there, right?
Well, I guess it goes back to intent. You know, we were asked to have the community come in here, assume someone driving or riding their bike down Thomas Avenue, let's go check it out, they're going to go through here. I don't know if they really want, are they really going to come to the front door or are they just going to pass by?
I'm also thinking of the folks that live there, their ability to go out to shopping areas or other amenities that might be within the, the walking area as opposed to hopping in their car and then having to drive it across the lot.
Yeah, maybe we can incorporate some crosswalks and crosshatch areas, things like that. Would that be an alternative?
I think that that would probably be a good start. And also, there's only sidewalk on the south side as opposed to also being on the north side.
There's an existing sidewalk there on the north already, correct?
Yeah, with all the sidewalk you see along the bridge, we are connecting to that. And I don't...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yep.
On the, the east side of the drawing, you know, along the three-story building, that's conventional sidewalk that you have there until it reaches the...
Yeah, we're going to stay with a five-foot concrete sidewalk, conventional sidewalk, and until we hit to the pavement. And then the area, as you mentioned, on the north side, that section tying into the patent wood sidewalk would be conventional concrete sidewalk.
Sure. And then everything else would be life walk?
Yeah.
You know, okay.
And I guess, you know, the other thing that, that we're looking at too is that this is, although this project stands alone, we are looking for the future. So, as I said before, you know, we are going to evolve hopefully into the city and we can, you know, want to make connectivity there more, and so I think your input there is going to help on that. Well, that's the other thing I wanted to bring up too, was a topic that we talked about and I failed to mention it before opening the questions, was the angled parking versus conventional 90-degree parking? I think that was a comment from Labella. And, right now, we felt that the one-way park, one-way traffic pattern along the south side of the building worked very well. We were able to maintain traffic flow into the building, around the building, but it's not a showstopper. Again, it decreases the amount of impervious area with this configuration, but as we move in the site plan, that we feel, if you feel that it must go to 90 degrees, we can keep that on the table.
What is the grade change like in that parking area, John? Will it make a difference how the cars are parked?
So, as I mentioned, as you go on the south side of the building, you're transitioning from elevation of 257 down to 251 is the elevation of the garage. So there's six-foot of grade change along that side of the building. So I don't see that, and I can't calculate the percentages right now for you, but I think it's very flat the further west you go with the parking. There's almost only one grade change from the back horn of the building to all the parking west of the main building. But I think, I think it'll work well. You know, we have to have ADA compliant parking. We talked about some of that parking being close to the back of the building where it's very flat, and that's where we want it because that's where the elevators are. So we're not having any handicap parking in that, call it a transitional area where we're dropping slope.
Okay. And I had a thought about the striped walkways, maybe where there's a high incidence of car traffic and people traffic in like a corner or something, maybe there could be some kind of a decorative curbing or fencing or something that just isolates you on those turns, along with the crosswalk that needs to be hedge crosswalk, yeah.
Just picking up on that, the one area that concerns me the most, I really don't have any problem with, you know, people walk through parking lots all the time, so I don't envision that we're going to have this influx of people traveling across there like crazy, but where you, on the south side of the building where you have people backing out of angled spots into an area where there's walk, walking path, I do see a potential problem there.
Okay. Well, give me an opportunity to work on that.
See, I don't think so.
Maybe if we make a mulch path consistent with a path that, that leads to the CSX trail or something porous, maybe we can look at that.
And take that walking path right out from that back section of parking where Richard's talking about behind the cars, is that what you mean?
Well, I was thinking about maybe in that section, if that's truly a concern, try to, you know, that slope is really challenging there. As you go, as you go up, between the south edge of parking and our property line, we have a tremendous changing grade. I think it's 62, you know, we have a nine-foot changing grade through there, it's pretty significant. So pushing, pushing pavement outside the edge there. But we can look at it, I think it's something that we could, we can address.
And, you know, looking long-term at the project, I mean, people are going to walk along the edge of the river and then eventually get up to the bridge and walk on the sidewalk. That south sidewalk is going to be the least-used sidewalk in the whole project.
Probably.
Until there's parking in the triangle.
The other, just to mention, you know, we have this triangular-shaped piece that is in the city of Rochester, that is under contract, so we could technically grade in that area and flatten those slopes, but we tried to leave as all those many trees as possible in that area. So, to give and take, you know, when it comes to the sidewalks and landscaping. So to give and take, you know, on, on, when it comes to the sidewalks and landscaping. The other thought I had, that probably Heinrich won't like it, is if I incorporated that, the median in the middle into the sidewalk. So I think there's a workaround, and I think we can talk about it in the future, I think.
John, is there, am I seeing this right? There's only one vehicle entrance and exit of this whole complex?
Correct. So, but we have a, it's a, it's a two-out-one-in configuration with a median, so for a public safety standpoint, if there was an accident on the inbound lane, we believe that the fire trucks could come through and go through the out lane to service the building, but as, as plans evolve, we, we do plan on connecting to Marina Drive in the future. And that, and that, and I believe we talked about it briefly one time, and that we measured the height of the bridge, I think it's forty feet, so we have confidence that a fire truck can get back here underneath the bridge.
Just so you know, John, we're just receiving this, so yeah, I wanna make sure everybody's got a chance to-
No, I appreciate, ask as many questions. I, I hope I'm answering correctly for you.
John, the, the number of apartments, hundred twenty-six, hundred twenty-five?
One twenty-five.
My math isn't any good, because I did fifty-four, and fifty-four, and eighteen, and I kept, three times I've got it down here, I still come up with one twenty-six.
And I think your math is correct.
Wow, do I get an A? So are we at one twenty-six?
Uh, but our application, I believe, states one twenty-five. I'd have to check with my listener, help me on that. We might be, uh, after all the changes in plans, Mr. Plamano, if we've been going one twenty-five, I don't think anyone's added the numbers.
Well, I'm just thinking about this, this cemetery of the, you know, of the building, I look at fifty-four, don't you? If I had mentioned fifty-four on the other side-
Yep.
But if you take something away, you're gonna have the space anyway.
Correct. So I think our, our current form of application to the zoning board is one twenty-five, so we're editing the plan probably in the smaller building, but I'll check with my client.
I, I don't share, I don't share the concern about the paved sidewalk portion of asphalt. I just, I don't envision it being a high-traffic area, even in the most wonderful of times. I'd rather not lose the landscaping, I'd rather not lose what we have to be perhaps impervious here and, you know.
I don't know that it's an either-or. I'm not an architect on this stuff. I'm hoping that there is, I think one person using it needs to be safe, and that's all I'm thinking about on this.
I, I guess the only comparison I have is I live on a, a street with no sidewalks, no curbs, and we have, we certainly don't have an awful lot of cars speeding down there. Our street is longer than this parking area. I, I love the opinion that the residents who are gonna live here are gonna respect that edge for walking and respect those people walking it. Typically, those cars that are going there are gonna be cars that are exiting, which is, and, you know, they're coming off a relatively, they're coming off a one-eighty turn. I understand all that, and safety should be certainly a concern, but I just, I don't see it as being an issue that we would, we would give up landscaping unless, unless we have, we have to, I think we should present him an alternative if we're gonna do this.
I would hope that they would present us with an alternative also. I mean, we're not even to that point yet on this plan, is, and I don't mean to cross-direct to you, Michael, but-
Well, no, it's, if, if it was, I didn't respect your opinion, you'd be the only guy sitting here.
I'm hoping that we can see a plan that does incorporate a little bit of a differential, so we know, to me, it sounds like it's just getting paved over, and it's being striped, and we're calling that a sidewalk.
Excuse me, gentlemen, may I please ask you to use your microphones?
Sorry.
Thank you.
I, and this is the first time I'm seeing this plan tonight, as you are, and I think that we're making a start here on this, and at least we've got a sidewalk going, which we didn't have previously, so.
And maybe just changing how it crosses the entrance and things, are things that John can take a second look at?
Right, we're forcing people right across that driveway at the beginning.
Couple small things.
I, I think there are things that can be addressed in here. I just, yeah, let's leave it at that.
Yeah, I'm not proposing that we give up any landscaping. If we can add landscaping, that's wonderful, too. I mean, that's why I think the, right down the middle of the parking lot is not a bad alternative.
Yeah, I, I really think it's a site plan issue.
You can raise it, so there's a bumper there.
You know, if I were there, I'd be, I'd be thinking of it as a plowing nightmare.
But I'm just trying to keep the, the folks that use it safe, even if it's only one person.
It depends on the person.
Yep.
Are there any other questions or comments, gentlemen and ladies?
I just wanted to see if they're awake.
Oh, don't worry, Michael, we're awake.
Is it still your goal to try to get these houses around Thomas Avenue?
Excuse me, I didn't hear you.
Is it still the goal to try to obtain these houses on Thomas Avenue?
Correct.
Can you tell us a little bit about the lighting on the west side? What that might look like?
So the west side being, we really don't have a lot of light shown here now. The biggest element of light is the larger of our poles projecting light from the center of the parking lot on the south side, projecting it north. We really haven't put any, anything on the, other than the one light pole here. Building mounted lights, I haven't really put anything facing out. I could work with Mr. Hinsonock. I don't see that being a challenge, putting additional lighting for the steps, and I think that's a good point. I think that was overlooked, probably on my part, putting some lighting where the, so people can transition down to the, to the ground. I think that future plans will probably, might even have some pedestal lighting along there so people can walk through that area, so I think that's a, that's a very good point.
So that green space could be utilized even at dusk and after dusk?
Yeah, it's always been in the vision of the, of the partners that this would be like a passive recreational area. Previous plans, we had pickleball courts and things like that.
Right.
We were a little limited with our size, but I still think people probably go out here and sit out, look out at the river, but I think that's a good catch. I think that we should add elements of lighting on the west side of the building. There will be some other lighting internally around the patios and things like that, but that, it's shielded from most, most sides, but that'll, I'll add that to future plans for you.
Thanks, John. Any other questions or comments? Mary, anything coming to mind?
All set.
Michael? You sure? Okay. Alan?
Just one silly question. The line that I'm seeing on the landscaping plan on the west side of the property?
This old line?
Yeah. Um, no, I'm sorry. The straight line that it isex the, the parking lot on the, the south side of the property.
I think it's one of the red lines.
Yeah.
You don't have it on, huh?
I don't think. You don't have it on here. I've got it on mine, and it's also showing it on this, on sheet number five.
Uh, that, that is, that's one of the tax parcels that we're purchasing. I believe that's Joy Drive, so that was a property line that was turned on, unfortunately. So if you go to the plat map, I think it's shown more clear.
So the city line is the next line beyond that, further to the west?
Yeah, so if you go to the plat, page two of ten-
Okay.
It shows that that, that's a parcel line.
All right.
And that is forty-five Pattonwood Drive.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep.
That one done, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
All set, thanks.
All set. Mike, all set? No other questions at this time? Okay. That being said, thank you very much. I'd like to reopen the public hearing. I wanna just reiterate that for folks that are here to talk, if you could sort of limit it to maybe some new things or respond to some new information that you heard this evening, but you're all welcome to have an opportunity to address the board and the applicant. So that being said, is there anyone that would like to come up and have a word?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Laduka. I live at two thirty-one Shore Drive, and you're probably wondering why I just gave you a card that said I'm president of Park Migs Neighborhood Association. The reason why I brought that up is I've been president of that association for about sixteen years. Park Migs has been around since nineteen sixty. We've worked really hard with East Avenue, Monroe Avenue, and Park Avenue over these years, and I've, I've been to many, many board meetings, zoning board meetings, and preservation meetings, and I'd just like to simply say that of all the projects that we've worked on in the city of Rochester, I encourage the board to, to bring this type of a project to Aranacoy. I'm an Aranacoy resident, and I plan on, in maintaining and being an Aranacoy resident for many years to come, and I just think that I encourage you to, to bring this project to Aranacoy. I've seen what we've done in the city of Rochester to make East Avenue, Monroe Avenue, and Park Avenue what it is today, and we're constantly working on it in, in all types of projects, bringing in residents, condos, working with the museum and science center, and it just goes on and on and on, and I just see this project as a project that will really, really make Aranacoy a great place to live. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Susan Surulik. I've been a resident of Aranacoy for sixteen years on Shore Drive. I enjoy living on the water now, but I do own a home, and I'm looking forward to something like a project like this in the future, which would be more of an apartment-type project, including the amenities that it offers. I did like some of the landscaping things that were, showed up, not some, most of them all, and I think that would also help improve Aranacoy a lot. So I support this project, and I just wanted to say that.
Thank you. And what was your address again? I'm sorry.
One thirty-six, one thirty-six Shore Drive.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Paul Morosco, three forty-three Huntington Hills, lifelong resident of Aranacoy. I'd like to thank the board for their service as a volunteer board for the important work you do. I just wanted to state my support for this project. I think it adds tremendous value to the town of Aranacoy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike Richards, I'm an outsider. I live at seven sixty-seven Bishop's Lane in the town of Webster. Middle-class citizens in the town of Webster have been priced out of waterfront property. I think this project, the way it has been presented to the board, is super. I'm looking at two more years in Webster. My wife retires. We currently have a four-bedroom house, and this project is tremendous, so I may become a West Aranacoy resident. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there. David Turner, twelve fifty-four Bay Shore Boulevard, and I don't think I could've said it better there. I'm looking for, I think, I think Aranacoy needs some nice apartments there in, in great locations that perhaps there I couldn't afford to buy, but I'd like to live. I have voiced my support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Catherine Reeves. I'm a former resident of Aranacoy, have family members in Aranacoy currently, and spend a lot of time here enjoying the River Harbor District. And I come here tonight because I think I do have something new to share with you that'll be of value to you, and in doing so, I take my expertise over twenty-five years in environmental sustainability in a corporate setting, working with real estate assessments as well as remedial cleanup of contaminated property and sustainable products and services. And what I want to suggest is that the developer and the board consider LEED standards, and that stands for Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design. And it's very important when we look at sustainability to recognize sustainability is not just green, it's the balance, it's the unity of having environmental improvements while at the same time having economic benefits in improving the social setting. And there is gain both when you look at a business on the customer side as well as the company side. So an important point to understand is the use of the term green or sustainable. Cleaning up a formerly contaminated site does not make this project green. I mean, it's land that the DEC recognized was contaminated, but there was no rush to, to clean it, to restore it, because not disturbing the setting would not release those contaminants. So if the developer truly wants a green project, then the LEED standard specifies the materials not only for construction, but for the ongoing use of the building. It's looking at the materials, construction materials used, as well as the energy use of the building, and looking at all the environmental impacts of the building, both during the construction phase and then during the time of the occupancy by the tenants. So it's looking at the waste level, the recyclability, the infrastructure that's provided, as well as waste in general, water use, and by turning to that standard, it's gonna take some of the emotion, I believe, out of it. It's gonna give you some universally internationally-recognized standards to turn to. And just to put it into perspective, you can Google the LEED organization, which is by the U.S. Green Building Council. There's a number of buildings in New York State, across the country, that are LEED-certified. There's many in this area, right in Rochester, and LEED sets standards for different types of properties, and there is one, in fact, for multifamily mid-rise developments. And by turning to such a standard, you're gonna realize sustainability, which I recognize that Aranacoy has a sustainability plan. So what better way to advance towards your sustainability plan to be the first in the area to have a LEED-certified multifamily mid-rise building? It just would dovetail so nicely with your sustainability plan and really set an example by a third-party certified organization. Thank you.
Thank you. Michelle, did we get her address?
I did ask.
I'm sorry, could you give us your address? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Joy Catino, and I'm from Webster, but we'll be downsizing, and this would suit my needs perfectly, and I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Joy, excuse me, Joy, I, what address were you at in Webster?
Eight oh three Coventry.
Thank you.
My name is Jessie Pelosi. I reside at one sixty-three Thorn Cliff Drive. I am for this project one hundred percent. I've seen facilities like this on the west coast that do tremendous, and I think it would be a great asset to the town of Aranacoy to be a waterfront with amenities down below. It enhances all the work that's been done- to Charlotte as well. So, you introduced both. I think it's a great idea, and I fully support it.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joanne Mudge. I reside at eighty Beacon View Court. And I do not, uh, support this project as stated at a hundred and twenty-five units. I would support, though, a project that would be according to the zoning code, specifically the area density of ninety-five units. I said that at the zoning board meeting, I believe that was last week. Let me continue my issues, okay? Contrary to the developer's previous claims, the proposed development does not conform to the two thousand and fourteen Town's Comprehensive Master Plan. The Lighthouse Point Design Principles does not include apartments, but does include condominiums. Somewhere along the line, over this past year, we've lost sight of that. It's condominiums, not apartments. The local waterfront rev- uh, the program, that's the LWRP, requires enhanced public access to waterfront and access to scenic views. This goal is not met with this project. Also, development of the waterfront opportunity areas is compatible with the residential scale and character of the existing neighborhoods. Again, this goal is not met by this plan. Resolution: Reduce the project's density, mass, and height to be compatible in scale and design with the existing adjacent residential neighborhood homes. And two, build condos, condominiums, not apartments, not to exceed the maximum of ninety-five units allowable per zoning code. Issue number two. Now, there was reference made to the zoning board. And you were there, and I heard Mr. Knopf's comments. One noted comment was, at the June fifth zoning board meeting, developers threatened to build additional apartments behind Beacon View Court houses on adjacent city land, if they do not get their way regarding the number of units, one hundred and twenty-five. This land in question is subject to city requirements and has no place in these discussions. Resolution: Yet again, require the project to adhere to the zoning code, two thirty-five, one fifty-three, A three, allowable maximum density of ninety-five units. Issue number three. The project cost is the same for a hundred and twenty-five units or ninety-five units. At previous town planning and board, uh, meetings, developers stated, although the total cost is the same for either ninety-five or a hundred and twenty-five units, they cannot afford to build the zoning maximum allowable. Once again, ninety-five units, because the project will not generate enough profit. One twenty-five unit apartment exceeds the allowable maximum density by thirty percent. If the profit margin is so slim, how likely will this project continue into the future? Can the town afford yet another failed project? Resolution: If the financial realities of this project cannot be realized with the required allowable maximum ninety-five units, even though developers may recoup up to twenty percent of total costs from New York State credits, then the project should not go forward. Here again, let's go back to zoning code. Require the project to adhere to the zoning code, allowable maximum density of ninety-five units. I agree with that. I would like to see this project. It's a great place to live at nine, at ninety-five units. The majority of River Harbor District neighbors oppose the one hundred and thirty-five revised, one hundred and twenty-five unit apartment complex. Consider, a hundred and seventeen residents, or ninety-two percent of the people surveyed in March two thousand and sixteen, signed the opposing petition number one. We mailed the signed petitions and names and street directory to you in April. Also, approximately fifty-plus people have spoken in opposition to the project at the last three public hearings, March, April, May, two thousand and sixteen. Only a handful of people were in favor of the project, and most of them were not from our neighborhood. They weren't for, from Shore Acres. They weren't from Webster. As time passes, will the planning board diminish or dismiss these opposing remarks? Resolution: Call the neighbors. Have a conversation with them. Their names and contact information is on each signed petition, number one. Number two, view the video recordings of the town's website if you were not present during these past public hearings. Understand, we have a new chair, and I understand we have a new member. Okay. And last, and also, read the published March two thousand and sixteen Town of Arundic quite older adult services study, A Town for a Lifetime. It's on file at the town. This report reports what the seniors want for a retirement place if they cannot remain in their own homes. It's here, folks. We've got our own homegrown report for seniors. Number four, place a building moratorium for six to twelve months to organize and charge a River Harbor District Committee group of involved parties, River Harbor District neighbors, City of Rochester, Arundic quite planning, zoning, and Conservation Board designated, to determine the best land use and conservation. I want to thank you for this opportunity. I will give Michelle Nichols a copy of this transfer for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Please hold your applause. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Missy Pelosi. I live at one thirteen Pontiac Drive. I'll make this short. Uh, there were some comments about what seniors want, and there's what comments about, uh, why, you know, Arundic, why people from other places are coming here to talk. If Arundic quite doesn't have a place like this, people seek elsewhere. I've often thought about going to, you know, the new project in Webster. It's something that we don't have. Young or old, again, we want new things. I've been here for thirty-two years. I love Arundic quite. I love what we've done so far. I want to see more things. We have a lot of waterfront. Let's expose it. Let's have things that young, old, grandkids, grandparents, everybody can enjoy. So, I'm for it, and I hope it goes through. Uh, thank you.
Thank you.
Jason Amrich, five two five zero St. Paul Boulevard. I've been a resident of Arundic quite for seven years. I moved here, um, because I really liked the idea of, uh, being in a place where the land and the waters meet. Uh, having access to one of the Great Lakes is a fantastic opportunity that in most major cities, you just don't have. So, um, you know, I'd love to see this project, project come to fruition. Before I moved to, to, to West Arundic quite, I remember reading this in the paper. It feels like a decade ago. Um, I just, uh, would like to see this project, you know, come into its own before I retire and move there. And I really think it just provides so many benefits to our town, not only in terms of, um, you know, just access to the water and creating the infrastructure that we need to be able to make that something that, uh, is really a shining star for our community. But it helps to build the critical mass that that area needs in order to, uh, really recreate what some other cities have done. Even the city of Buffalo recently with their, um, River Harbor District have just done some fantastic things by cooperating and really leveraging the resources of the community. You know, I'm a boater, and going to see what the city of Rochester has done with that port is pretty amazing. And I, I'm sad in, in one sense that, uh, the town of Arundic quite kind of got beat to the punch, um, on getting that construction started. So, again, I'm in support of it. I just, uh, I'd like to see it, you know, in my lifetime here, because we've been talking about it for a long time. And I'd like to see the board act in a, in a way that would, would help to get this project off the ground.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Jack Herrma. I've lived, worked, and played in this town for over sixty years. And I'm here now as a developer or an architect, a promoter, or anything else. But I want to speak in favor of the developer's project for these reasons. There are approximately forty-seven acres left in that area of ninety, sixty years ago, to develop with about seven acres owned by the town. I firmly believe this available space should be dedicated to upscale housing, such as luxury apartments, condos, town homes, and patio homes. Arundic quite is in great need of these types of property, as there are few in town. The apartment development will add approximately twenty to twenty-five thousand, or twenty-five million, in property value, helping to stabilize, our town taxes. The project will also be a stimulant for the economy in our town. The Aurora Bridge is an architectural enhancement and adds to the beauty of the neighborhood. Beautifully designed living space will further complement the looks and appeals of our neighborhood. And I can go back one more, not relevant to this project here, but three years ago, we started work on a library that a lot of people were not in favor of. Today, the library is up, running, and it's a community event. It's, this town is growing and becoming better and better, as I see it. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Dan O'Connor. I live at thirty-seven Barron's Road. That's about a mile, mile and a quarter of Thomas, one block off of Thomas. I just have a few points. Um, if you take the Woodlands, Woodlot E-Pod maps and look at the whole town, and then take the steep slope E-Pod maps, there's no land left to develop anything. So, if you want to have any meaningful development in, in Arundic quite, you're going to have to make buildings taller with a higher density. I don't see where you have any other choice. That's point number one. Point number two is there was all, been all kinds of discussion about all the bad things that were going to happen when this project was going to be built. Okay? Somebody suggested that a study be made. Well, that study was made. It was made for the Aurora Bridge back in, in, uh, I think it started in the nineteen-eighties. The thing is about that thick, I spent parts of two days paging through it, and there's nothing in that report that would indicate there's any problem of building this building, which is in the same spot essentially that the bridge was built. Not only did they do the report, they built the bridge. And I don't remember any problems environmentally building that bridge. Maybe I wasn't paying attention, but does anybody else remember any problems? I don't. I, I don't think, if you had a, if you didn't have any problems building a bridge, you're not going to have any problems building a, building. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Maria Peretta. I also am a lifelong resident of Arundic quite. This is my first time coming to a board meeting. It's been awesome. Had a good time. Forty-two Fairleigh Drive.
Thank you.
Um, full support of this planned project, everything that's been discussed. The concerns very valid from everyone that has spoken. Um, I, I trust that it will be looked into correctly, and what needs to be amended or, uh, resolved will happen. And I also hope it happens very soon, and we stop dragging our feet about it. I support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm one of the out-of-towners. I'm James Van Arstall from nineteen Pinion Drive in Henrietta. I can probably speak for the youth that, the, the youth sportsmen that have access to water, that cheap would probably be nice. And like, the development is going to be great and up-to-date and modern. And I'm just here to show my support for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address the board?
I'm, uh, I'm David Attardi. I live at two eight oh four Titus Avenue. Um, I've lived in Arundic quite since nineteen sixty-nine. I bought the house from my mom and dad and renovated it. And, uh, when we came there, you'd probably be aghast, because my dad, back in nineteen sixty-nine, there was no such thing as environmental studies. And, I mean, he took a bulldozer that he made, and he, he cleared the land himself. You know, I'm sure he did this all at the sixty-nine standards, but it's, it's a lot different. And what I'm, what I'm saying is, living there all my life, it made me a good person, basically. So, I appreciate, you know, the waterfront. And I know I would like to see as many people have that. I, I really enjoy driving by the Webster Development, and it would be, if it's like that standard, I haven't seen the, the blueprints, but if it's, you know, well-built and, and everybody does their job, and I trust that they do their job. I'm a general dentist. I know people. So, I'm, I'm assuming, you know, in good faith, that it's going to be a good project. One thing I'd like to share is, I know teeth. I don't know what the difference designated is between a condominium and an apartment, and what, is it square footage? Is it right of usage? That's the only thing that's unclear. And also, I just want to bring to point about the Green and the Leap project, is that technology is logarithmically improving. So, by, I mean, I don't know how long this project's going to take, but the, you know, by the time you're ready to employ it, you might actually be surprised in the building materials changing and all that stuff. So, but can anybody answer me that about the?
Sure.
What the, the conundrum is between condominium and apartment? I, I don't know what that would be. Gotcha. That's it?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got my approval, though.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to just come on up?
Good evening. My name is Andrew Roberts. I reside at one thirteen Pontiac Drive. I've lived in Arundic quite for seven and a half years. And being an avid fisherman, uh, water sportsman, I, my family has a place on the Thousand Islands. I would really like, love to see some sort of development on that property, as far as having access. I think it would be, uh, great to drum up more business. A couple, a couple gentlemen have already mentioned, so I won't go into detail. But I fully support this project. I think it would be a great injection of new people, new money into that area. And love to see it, uh, take off. Thank you.
Thank you. Did anyone else want to address the board?
My name is Charles Dietz. I reside at thirty Beacon View Court. I've been a resident of Arundic quite for sixty-six years. This is the third time I've addressed the planning board in regard to the Lighthouse Point proposal. Each time, I've expressed the views and concerns of our neighborhood. It appears to me, and quite a few others, that the planning board has not listened to our concerns. The planning board has recently changed, and two of the board members that listened and understood our thoughts and concerns are no longer here. Each meeting, we, the neighborhoods of Eaton Road, Thomas Avenue, and Beacon View Court have expressed our objections or concerns to the various parts of this project as presented. Now, we have to express them again to a modified board. One has to wonder, with rumors that are bannered about, that the new supervisor has made changes to the planning board to reflect his stand on the issues. And I got to say, based on the cross-talk amongst the board members tonight, I tend to agree with that. I want to once again remind the new board and the supervisor that hundreds of voting, tax-paying residents of Arundic quite are not in support of a lighthouse project as currently presented. My neighbors and other nearby residents have continually voiced their concerns as to the size, the environmental impact, and the added traffic that will affect the surrounding neighborhoods. It has been brought up again and again, that the partners do not know what the neighbors want. Well, let me tell you what the neighbors want. First, a complete cleanup of the existing brownfield by removing all existing contamination from the site. Moderning of this cleanup needs to be done so absolutely no contamination escapes into the surrounding neighborhood. The site needs to be inspected by federal and state agencies, along with an independent consultant. Once certified free of all existing contaminants, then and only then, should come. Once certified free of all existing contaminants, then and only then should construction begin. Second, higher-end condominiums or townhouses similar to Harbor Hill in lieu of apartments. Single-family dwellings owned, not rentals. Third, provide entrance and exit to the project via Marina Drive, not Thomas Avenue. Marina Drive already has an existing traffic signal. This will allow all residents easy access to all points, south, east, and west. It will divert added traffic from Eaton Road and Thomas Avenue, especially when the bridge is up during Wednesday night concerts. Both create massive traffic jams in the area. Access to and from Marina Drive might also benefit existing businesses at the local plaza from the added exposure. Fourth, comply with the town's current maximum allowable ninety-five unit zoning regulation. The purpose, proposed design is massive and does not fit in with the surrounding neighborhood. Fifth, truly listen and incorporate the Beacon View Court neighbors' suggestions for landscape, privacy, and security as presented to the board after the May meeting. These are very reasonable conditions and concerns and do not differ from the current regulations already in place by the town for future development at this location. This is the right way for the town and its neighbors if in fact the town decides to go forward with this or any other project in the area. The new town administration is rumored to have expressed support for the Lighthouse project. With the current shakeup of the planning board, the evidence certainly seems to support that. They are not, you are not listening to the concerns of your citizens and neighbors. We as residents and taxpayers are getting tired of being treated as only minor collateral damage for the promise of additional revenue for the town. The town should have learned a lesson from previous administrations and not be swayed by promises of grandeur as by earlier carpetbaggers. We live here, we pay taxes here. And just a reminder to the current town board and the new temporary supervisor, we vote here.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Mike Harrington. I live at ninety Beacon View Court and I've spoken on this project before and I'll start off the same way that I did last time. The project looks phenomenal. It looks great. The efforts of everyone from John to anyone else involved in adjusting and adapting and fixing and planting is recognized. It looks phenomenal, but it's not the right location for the project. So here we are again. I want to say this is the second time, maybe third time that I've spoken here. We've had, as Joanne Mudge said, roughly fifty, probably more people speak against this project. It's on record. Many of these people, most of them, are in the River Harbor District and these are the voices you have to listen to, not out-of-towners who say they're going to live there. I put it in writing right now to the newly appointed people on this planning board, please listen to the residents of the River Harbor District. Again, to reiterate what Joanne Mudge says, we don't want our voices to be lost over time. This has dragged out for long enough and I'm going to be redundant with myself and with what anyone else opposed to this project has already said. Here are our concerns and they've already been stated. Land contamination. We beg you not to allow the unearthing of a contaminated landfill. I don't know much about industrial waste, but what was presented in March sounds pretty dangerous to me. It sounds like an Aaron Brockovich situation and forgive my ignorance. One of my other neighbors, Patrick, alluded to the fact that you're poking a hornet's nest. Leave it alone. He said it twice. He said it at two meetings. I have kids. I live right down there. I don't understand how a regular floor installer or house painter would have to tarp off an area for lead paint when this digging would only allow for someone to wear a hard hat, safety goggles, and jeans. Maybe I'm ignorant, but I am afraid of what will happen if this were to start. And again, I'll say it again, the project looks great, but I am fearful. Please understand that. I don't have an answer. Secondly, project density. Ninety-five units, okay? We all know that's the maximum for the site. Just imagine a thirty-two percent increase in those units allowed for this project and the impact it's going to have on traffic. You can barely cross Thomas at that makeshift sidewalk, crosswalk, whatever you want to call it, without getting blown away by someone coming down that hill. Pattonwood, I don't think is as bad because there's a light there, but it's, it's treacherous, okay? It's precarious, especially during summer boating sea, season. I understand that a traffic study was done. I had it in my hand. I question its validity because I have trouble crossing there if I'm going out for a run or a bike ride. If you were to build the code, there's probably more hope that the traffic increase would be reasonable, but I doubt it given what it already is. I wasn't going to mention this, but security. I, I, I'm not living in fear in West Arondacoit. I don't want anyone to think that, but there's a security issue, okay? I'm assuming that with these not being owned, that this may be a transient population coming to live there, okay? I kind of made a joke that I was not a millennial nor a retiree, but who knows who's going to live there, okay? These are not owned places. A mulch path crossing the CSX property is an interesting proposition since five new signs were put up by CSX saying "Don't trespass" recently. Don't know if anybody's seen that. I assume that's not a good sign. I don't know. Light and noise pollution certainly is a factor. For the houses, the first, I don't know, nine or ten houses, maybe eleven or twelve right up the right side of Beacon View Court, it's going to be a factor. Light and noise pollution. I, I mean, looking at the landscaping proposition, it looks like there might be a berm, maybe a fence. Obviously, there's a cut-through as John alluded to. I don't know. I don't even have anything else to say because it's foreign to me. I don't feel like, like Chuck Dietz says, we've necessarily been heard. I don't have a fair market value for my house right now and if this starts going up in a month or the digging starts, I'd kind of like that before, before the project goes up because I don't think we're going to stay. The list goes on. Your potential transient living project is again disconnected with what this nice little nook of Arondacoit or Charlotte has to offer. Please, once again, list for me any high-end opportunities there are here. High-end, other than the Rochester Yacht Club. Everybody knows that. Please consider, once again, making the structure fit the land and the surrounding area rather than what's being done, attempting to fit the land to the structure. As with the two thousand fourteen, it's already been mentioned, comprehensive master plan it suggests in section five dash one, that that is a, shall I say, prerequisite. Also, if you look back even further to the nineteen ninety-nine plans for land use, it seemed like a better solution. Green space, retail, I don't remember. I looked at it years and years ago, but nobody was really opposed to that at that time, living in the River Harbor District. I would suggest, and it may be out of line and I apologize for this, that a moratorium be put on this project until a committee is formed, like Joanne Mudge said, to discuss the use of this land, consisting possibly of city officials, town officials, seems like CSX representatives, and especially concerned residents in the River Harbor District. Their voices are what matter, not people who say, "I might live there" because they came here from Webster. I mean, I suppose if this project was going up behind Bay Shore Boulevard, Bishop's Lane, Huntington Hills, somewhere on St. Paul, Fairleigh Drive, Pontiac or Barron's, you might feel differently. But you don't have to deal with the industrial waste situation that we have to deal with. And I want to reiterate, please refer to this manual. I have it bookmarked. You don't need a copy, I'm assuming. It's recent. March two thousand sixteen, Town of Arondacoit Older Adult Services Study. The study shows seniors find, are looking for more affordable assisted living options and patio homes, which seem to be lacking in our town. This is not what's being presented here. Thank you for listening and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come to the podium? Would you guys like to have an opportunity to address? Come on up.
Good evening. My name is Amy Kendall. I'm an attorney with Knopf Shaw and I'd just like to take a moment to address some of the comments that we've heard tonight. As an environmental professional myself, I have an environmental management degree and I've been an environmental lawyer for, for many, many years. I certainly understand and appreciate the comments that we've heard from the public tonight and I just want to touch on those. First of all, the comments regarding the LEED standards. I want to address the sustainability issues. A LEED certification does not necessarily equal a sustainable project. That is, you can have a sustainable project without certification. As many of you know, New York has been going through an upgrade to its building codes. So there are a lot of now in energy conservation, sustainability requirements that are built into the building code. So those increased standards, which are coming online right now as we speak, are going to be applicable in the future to this project. So that's one thing to keep in mind. In addition, I wanted to address the issue of the study that has been mentioned and I want to submit to you that the study's been done. The study was done in the context of planning, your comprehensive plan. The, the study was done in the context of rezoning, so the zoning of this particular area to a River Harbor District. So this has been studied over and over again. I also want to point out exactly the process that, that's going on right now. So right now, we are dealing with a SEAKER process. So we're looking at environmental impacts. It's going to be up to the zoning board to make a determination. They're the only ones that can make the determination regarding density and variances. So those particular comments are best addressed to the zoning board. And then we're going to come back and we're going to come back to the planning board and talk about the site plan. And I want to say that we are pretty far along in terms of the site plan. Usually at this point in the SEAKER process, the plans are not this developed. And so I think we're, we're trying to manage, you know, dealing with the comments of the board and perhaps some of them are site plan related comments and some of them are SEAKER comments, but we want to make sure that we address all of your concerns. And that was our objective here tonight is just sort of to run down all of the different points that have come up in past meetings. Obviously, the sidewalks are a concern that has recently been expressed with respect to the mulch path that we've discussed, the CSX property. That was something that was requested by the board. If it's there, if it's not there, are, you, it, that's sort of a site plan issue and, you know, we can make that connected, we cannot make it connect. It's, it's, that's really up to the board here. I just want to make sure I address, one of the commenters suggested that we, we threatened to build something and I want to make a clarification. Hopefully you can, you know, you can watch the zoning board minutes, but I, I just want to make sure that we understand, is there a portable mic? Hello? Okay. So, as everybody's well aware, this, these parcels are in both the City of Rochester and, which is, which is not part of the project we're talking about now, but there, there's different parcels that our client has an option to buy and there are ones that they do not at this time. The suggestion was that it, this particular area, and please, John, correct me if I'm wrong, this particular area is City of Rochester property. Right now with its current zoning, we could build a skyscraper there, but in deference to the neighbors and to try to preserve some of the green space, the client has agreed to, to not build on that property to more or less cluster development on this particular section of the site. And I think that was the discussion that went on at the zoning board this month. So with that, I, I think, John, did you have any additional comments?
I guess one point of clarification I had is when I talk about green practices, I think, and I know the chairman knows this, but we're talking about the, the DEC SWIP plan. When I talk about green, we have green practices that we have to adhere to. So if I confuse the board in any way, I might have confused the public, so, but that's what I talk about with green. And then just to, to piggyback what you said, you know, I think it'd help the public to kind of give them a timeframe, what we're looking at and to explain, maybe better, maybe Kerry can explain better than I can, but I know there's a lot of emotion with this process. This board and the new members of this board have worked very hard and I think that we've, we've gone a long way, but we're still looking to just get that one step, which is the SEAKER process. We're going to be working again on the site plan, so I just don't know if everyone understands that. I feel like people are putting pressure on you, saying, "Any decision you make tonight on SEAKER is a rubber stamp and the project's done." I, I know that's not the case and I don't know if the public does. So any help that I think the staff can give to explain what's going on would be helpful to the public and that's all I wanted to add.
I have a point of clarification about the LEED standards.
No, we, actually, we're all done with public comment right now. Thank you.
Can I just ask, John, to clarify one question, please?
Then where, then where do we end, though? Why don't you bring those questions back or you can ask after? We could, we could keep reeling through this for quite a period of time. Thank you. Do you have anything else that you'd like to share?
And to John's point and with respect to some of the additional comments that folks want to make, to be clear, as was alluded to earlier, no decisions being made tonight with respect to a determination of significance. The town's still discussing coordination of lead agency status with the City of Rochester. So at a minimum, we're still one, maybe two or more meetings off from a determination of significance. So there's nothing immediately impending here. It's, there's going to be a dialogue that's going to continue.
So thank you for clarifying that, Rob. I, that's important for everybody to understand. So we're, we're not making a decision. So are there any questions that anyone else on the board has at this time?
No.
No. And we'll have to keep the public hearing. Do you want to explain that to the public too, Rob, why we continue to keep the public hearing open?
So this is, the public hearing was open. This item appears on our agenda month after month as an open public hearing while we're working with the city to coordinate on SEAKER and to get their consent with respect to lead agency status. So until this board makes its determination of significance that I alluded to a couple minutes ago, the public hearing is going to remain open. So folks are welcome and are encouraged to come to each meeting that this appears on the agenda and share, as the chair, a person indicated in her opening remarks, to share your comments on new information that's presented, share your comments. I know some folks are concerned that there's new folks on the board, so to the extent that you feel it's necessary and appropriate to rea, rea, excuse me, reiterate some of your past comments and concerns, you should feel free to do so. You know, we generally have a five-minute timetable on public comment, but to the extent that you feel it's necessary to reiterate some of your concerns based on the new folks on the board, it's within your, your purview to do that.
If I could just add something to that also, in my four years on the board, we've never had a project where we have had public hearing over and over and over again. So a, any illusion that you're not getting a chance to be heard or that we're not listening, we've, we've listened more on this project than any project in my four years, so. And we're going to keep it open and we're going to keep listening to you and we invite your comments to the extent that they're new and unique and, and stuff that can help us make this decision. So, I mean, this is somewhat unique, at least in my four years.
Yes, thank you. So that being said, we will move on to the next item. Thank you. Thank you, John.
Am I reading this one?
No, but you read it because it's tabled.
Keep it on the table.
Do we need a motion?
Oh, sorry.
So you just want to?
What are we going to talk about?
So the next case on the agenda is PZB 1504-4. Just as an update on that, that's currently on the table. The town engineer's representative had sent a letter to the developer with respect to certain issues regarding the, the secret environmental assessment form for which they were seeking clarification, and that's going to be held on the table until next month's meeting to allow them an opportunity to respond.
I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
We have minutes. That's got to be approved.
Thank you.
I'll be honest with you. I have not had a chance to review the minutes, and I know because of the change in the board, we probably need most all the votes, so.
All right. We'll, we'll hold them till next month. That's fine. Thank you.
Motion to close.
If I could just make a comment before we close, I'm sorry. One, I'd like to welcome Mr. Evelyn. I know we didn't get a chance to do that earlier. But, but I do want to make a comment about Mr. Ritchie. He sat next to me for four years. When I came on this board, I didn't know what I was getting into. I had no idea how many hours I was going to put into this. And, and he was a very valuable resource to me personally, but also as a tax-paying citizen of Aronacoyt. I appreciate his inquisitiveness, his willingness to ask tough questions, his knowledge, and I think he'll be missed on this board.
Thank you. And welcome, Mike.
Thank you.
And Mary.
Motion to close.
Any seconds?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That's a good thing. Have a nice evening.
Pretty much this day.